Good evening. I would like to call to order the January tenth, two thousand and eighteen, school committee meeting. The time now is six thirty-two P.M. We've been entering into executive session to continue discussion relative to collective bargaining with employee groups and the strategy we follow in on continued on low litigation. The school committee will reconvene in open session following the executive session. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
So I have a motion and a second on the floor to enter into executive session. This does require a roll call vote. Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. So at this time, we'll be entering into executive session and we'll be joining everyone for our regularly scheduled school committee meeting at seven P.M. Thank you. I would like to call to order the January tenth, two thousand and eighteen, school committee meeting. The time now is seven oh-two P.M. The January tenth, two thousand and eighteen, school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio/video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would like to ask if anyone who's recorded tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Oh, no newspapers yet, so we're gonna have to take our own pictures, Mrs. Matthews, tonight. Okay, with that being said, I would like to ask everybody to join me in the pleasure of reading this.
For the least, to survive, the United States of America, it's a true record like always stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is certainly a great night, a lot of faces out there tonight, a lot of recognition. We love nights like this, it's really what it's all about. We love to see our students and having inherent school committee meetings. So with that being said, I would like to now turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Malone, for our recognition this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, a great evening this evening, and recognize some of our student athletes and some of our coaches as well. Terrific fall season, and just a great recognition of our students' efforts to be well-rounded, socially-emotionally-developed. They represent our town and our school district every day when they're out there, and we appreciate all their efforts. We're gonna start off with a couple of individual recognitions for some of our student athletes. And I would like Mr. Druin and Coach Malloy to please come up and help me out for one second. And our first honoree is Miss Rachel Sessa. Rachel could come up. And Rachel, once again, her attendance at school committee rivals my own, because she's here all the time, mainly for events like this. And once again, we're just so proud to have Rachel represent our cross-country in-track program at different points in the season, and have the significant award of being a glow ball scholastic for cross-country, and just a great representative of the cross-country team. And we're gonna talk a little bit about the cross-country team a little bit later, but certainly Rachel's success over a long period of time here in Tewksbury certainly reflects on her dedication, both as a student and as an athlete, and we know she'll continue that on at Georgetown University next year. Mr. Druin, I'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, no, she's been here more than me, more than most people here, for sure. Outstanding representation, outstanding representative of our school here, Tewksbury Memorial High School. Super student, super friend, super classmate, does all the right things here for us at the high school, was a great team captain, a lot of those younger kids on this team, and we'll talk a little bit later about it. Our team was young and transitioned, some of their, you know, up-and-coming runners are freshmen and sophomores, and Rachel has the perfect temperament and mindset to bridge that and move them forward, help them grow, keep the tradition going, and she's had a tremendous fall. Took second place in the MBC meet, took second place in the Division III meet, just took this past weekend indoor, just took third at the Dotwood Invitational, which is a massive meet, she took third. She has numerous school records that she's set. I can't say any more about her than you guys already have heard she's done. She's done everything in this track program and kinda rewritten that whole record book, so she's a pleasure to deal with every day. Coach Malloy?
A couple of things that you don't see that probably set Rachel apart. She's really like the social glue. You know, I talked a little bit about this in a couple of my classes when I had the students come through, but, you know, really, what you want out of a high school student, a high school leader, is somebody that asserts their position in the school by lifting others up, not by stepping on them. And that's what Rachel does. She lifts people up, and in doing so, she asserts her own greatness. And the other thing is, she learns so much from her failures. You know, she fails, she struggles, she, just like everybody else, a lot of people don't see it, the news doesn't report on it, because she learns from it. And so those are, I think, two things that I think probably more than any athlete I've coached really set Rachel apart.
We have Mrs. Bennett. I think what we'd like to say too is, Rachel, it has been an absolute pleasure to watch you through the years grow as a leader at Tewksbury Memorial High School. You certainly exemplify what a student athlete is here and what a true leader is, whether I see you at hats off for your being honored for your academics, or we see you in the newspaper or at your track meets. But what really made me feel really good is when they're reading and talking about you, and everyone has nothing wonderful to say about you, but somebody told the story about how you treat everybody the same. And it's really what Mr. Malloy just said, how whether it would be the staff in our cafeteria or the gym, you're always there to help everybody else and lead by example, and that's the stuff that really stand out. You know, you're a great athlete, you're outstanding, right? That's wonderful. You're so smart, you're academic, you're doing great, but being a great person is something that not everybody, you know, that's a great leadership that you've demonstrated, and we couldn't be more proud. You exemplify what a Tewksbury Memorial High School student should look like. We're so proud of you for doing that for our students, for our staff, for our community, so thank you so much.
And I have to say, I don't think this Sessa judge is involved, but I have to read it. And Mr. Sullivan's gonna help me up, because I guess you've gotten another award that's not on here. Whereas Rachel Sessa has been named Boston Globe, Boston Herald All-Scholastic for her stellar performance on the Tewksbury Memorial High School Girls varsity cross-country team. And I guess she's also gotten the Tom Crier Athletic Year for two thousand and seventeen award as well. Whereas Rachel is the MBC Runner of the Year, second overall at the MBC Championship, and second overall in the Division III State Championship Meet, and whereas Rachel is the Team Captain of Division III State Champion Team, and whereas Rachel will be attending Georgetown University in the fall on a track scholarship, and whereas Rachel Sessa has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself, to her parents and family, to the Tewksbury Memorial High School, and the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, recognizes the many achievements of Rachel Sessa.
Rachel, come stand for a nice picture. We gotta take our own pictures. Miss Malloy standing this side. Yep, every good. Oh, boy, that was all us. We just wanted to get our, listen, it was not us.
Oh, committee, take some village.
Oh, boy. No.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And Madam Chair, we'll bring up two honorees right now from our football team, and if I could have Coach Elwood to come on up, please, with Mr. Druin. And we'd like, I think we should have Joe lead the way since he blocks Brandon most of the time during the game anyway, so. Joe Rosberg and Brendan Winn come on up with Coach Elwood and Mr. Druin a few more, please. Two outstanding student athletes again from our Tewksbury Memorial High School football team. Joe has certainly been awarded with the opportunity to be Boston Herald All-Scholastic. Very proud of him and his ways, and he's been moving on to Wesleyan University to the end of his high school career. And Brendan is a Boston Glow Ball Scholastic, and two terrific young men who represented the football team in Tewksbury Memorial High School in a terrific way. And it's great to see two gentlemen that, you know, are smart, good citizens around the building, but yet fly around the football field with a purpose. So they're great kids and great representatives of our district, and Mr. Druin, I think you can say a little bit more.
Yeah, you hit it right on the head. They're great representatives of our district, they're great representatives of our school. You need a lot of stuff done in this building, and, you know, Joey and Brendan are guys that get it done. The four captains, and we'll talk with the football kids a little bit later, are outstanding representatives. You know, we sent Joe and Brendan and Will to that leadership conference this past summer. They took a lot of those things and a lot of those different techniques they used and tried to, you know, insert some of those things into the football locker room about leadership and doing the right thing. It's been a pleasure to watch them for the last three years, and they've done some incredible things on the field. As good as they are as football players, they're better people. They're outstanding in the classroom, they're just a pleasure to have. They're, you know, in the position that I'm in, I don't generally get to deal day-to-day with a lot of kids, you know, in a different position. These guys will stop in the office, it just makes the day, when they come in and say hello and stop in, and, you know, even it's a little what's up or whatever, they're just good people, they're just good guys, they're gonna be sorely missed when they're gone. So let's turn it over to Coach Elwood.
Yeah, you know what, I just, you know, appreciate you guys having these guys, they truly deserve some recognition beyond what we do at the banquet and that kind of thing. And I'm not gonna repeat what everybody else just said, but, you know, I have a huge source of pride for me and our coaching staff and our Hoops Club and everybody that follows Tewksbury football, and, you know, it's more than wins and losses, but these guys, these four here, and then our fifth captain's down there, hopefully beating up some berecched kid on the mat, Blake Hills. You know, these four guys were tremendous leaders for us on and off the field. We asked these guys to go out there as young kids, as sophomores, to go out and play against men and fight for us, and they've done it ever since, so this is not just a guy about one year. They were a part on the varsity field, 29 wins, walking on their way out of here, there's not a lot of kids in the state of Massachusetts that can say that, so just proud of them, did a great job and left a lot of good lessons, a lot of good leadership cues to the kids that'll come in, fill their shoes next couple of years, so thank you for having us.
Before Mrs. Sullivan speaks, I'd just like to say something to you gentlemen as well. It is really great, we can stand and look at the students that represent our school, and not only they grade in and out of the classroom, but on the field, academically leaders, it really is a sense of pride. You guys have really represented Tewksbury well, your families should be so proud. We are certainly proud of you, and we congratulate you on your achievements, both academically and athletically, so keep up the great work in you. You have a lot of kids to lots to look up to, right? They gotta keep that high standard that you gentlemen have done, so congratulations.
Good evening, gentlemen. On behalf of the school committee, it's my honor to read this resolution of recognition to you, Joe. Whereas Joe Rosberg has been named Boston Herald All-Scholastic for his outstanding performance on the TMHS football team, and whereas Joe is a three-year starter on the football team, two-time All-Conference selection, two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, and MBC Lineman of the Year for two thousand and seventeen, and whereas Joe was named Team Captain of the Division III North Sectional Champion, and whereas Joe Rosberg has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to himself, to his parents and family, to Tewksbury Memorial High School and the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Joe Rosberg. Congratulations.
Thank you. How are you guys? Great job, great job, again, as you do, of course. Everybody, but mine is for our Brendan Winn. So recognition of, recognition, a resolution of recognition. Whereas Brendan Winn has been named Boston Globe All-Scholastic for his outstanding performance on the Tewksbury Memorial High School football team, and whereas Brandon is a two-year starter on the Tewksbury Memorial High School football team, two-year MBC All-Conference selection, and thousand-yard rusher in both two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen. And whereas Brandon was named Team Captain of Division III North Sectional Champion, and whereas Brendan Winn has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to himself, to his parents and family, to the Tewksbury Memorial High School and the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Brendan Winn. Thank you. Thank you.
Take a nice picture. No, not go on. No, we need you.
Yep.
If we can have them bring up the
Go on, girls.
This large group of girls from the girls' cross-country team.
Come on, girls.
And this is very typical, because every time I see the girls' cross-country team, they're always together. So this is a great opportunity for us to look at this fantastic group of young women who not only do a great job representing our school district athletically, but they also all do a great job academically, represent themselves in the school district, and certainly high level at all times. But it's also very exciting when the work and effort that they put in with their coaches is rewarded in that they are the Division III State Champions in the girls' cross-country issue, which is just an outstanding. Can we put that over to Mr. Druin?
Sure. All right, let's announce who's here. We'll start with Rachel Sessa, Michaela Page, Mackenzie Clark, Holly O'Leary, Sarah Cruspa, Devin Veets, Lily Robinson, Megan Ostate, no, Kayla Caneley, Shannon Crowley, and Sarah Palomino. Outstanding team, they were the MBC champs, they were the league meet champs, they were the Division III State champs, they finished third in the All-State, they were, they have five first-team All-Conference runners, and they have twenty-seven straight winning, twenty-seven straight match-winning streak, which is unheard of. Coach Malloy was the Coach of the Year in the Merrimack Valley, who's also the Lowell Sun Coach of the Year. Our track program, both boys and girls, are second to none. Outstanding coaches do a great job with this program. This program is well thought of throughout the state. Anytime you go anywhere, talking about cross-country, track, our girls' program's right, you know, right there, and these guys and these girls have done a great job coaching and have bought into the system and put the mileage in and do the work. So it's a pleasure to watch them run, week in and week out, match in and match out, race in and race out. So turn it over to Coach Malloy, because it's been a pleasure to watch them go.
I think we speak for the girls when I say, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the success is attributed to the training and the experience that Coach Kuzak has and has come up with over the years. I know his presence has made me a better coach, a more thoughtful coach, and I know that every single girl here would say the same thing. So, you know, they kinda, they'll put my face in the paper, but it's really the work of a collaboration between Coach Kuzak and I, as well as the willingness of the girls to do the work. You know, a pretty good football coach a little ways down the road in Foxborough, who always says, "The athletes win them and the coaches lose them." And I think that's completely true. We don't run the miles that they run, we don't run the races, we don't deal with nearly the anxiety that they deal with. And it doesn't mean it always goes well, and that there aren't mistakes along the way, but kinda like, kinda from Rachel's lead and Holly's lead, we learn from them, you know, we grow from them. And I think that's what I'm most proud of, is, as Ms. Palomino spoke to, the growth that these girls have shown, whether it's in, you know, a handful of months like our freshmen, or a handful of years like our seniors.
Awesome. No, they're a pleasure, they really are. Great group of kids.
I think, I think the one thing about the high school, boy, is that track program easy to sell, right? All they talk about is great coaching, great people, great, you know, great students be around, a lot of fun times, everyone puts each other's work together. I mean, I'm driving around this high school a lot, and I see you all running, having a good time, you know, the boys program as well, it's just great to see. That's what high school's all about, right? That's what your high school's purpose is about. Boy, you guys compete at a high level, and we're so proud of that, but it's that, seeing you running the side streets, right, seeing the laughter, seeing, you know, all those high school memories that you guys are creating, it's really truly wonderful. So keep up the great work. We hope the younger, you know, the freshmen, the sophomores, juniors, continue the leadership that we've had from our seniors and keep this program strong and running. I think with your coaching, that'll definitely happen, so keep up the great work. Good luck. Nice picture.
And Madam Chair, finally, if we could have Coach Elwood come up with his captains, I don't know if anyone else in the football staff is here, but Elwood, Coach Kuzak.
Come on, Bradley.
Madam Chair, we'd like to look at the Tewksbury Memorial High School football team right now as a whole. Certainly, a lot of our teams have success, we certainly talked about our state champion cross-country team, our football team had great success this year as well, and it's a great indication of the young men you see in front of you right now, but as a team as a whole, it's certainly a great reflection of Coach Elwood and his staff. We'll talk a little bit about Coach Elwood as well, but it's, it's a great feeling when you can see the amount of work these student athletes do across the board in all of our schools. The football team happens to practice right outside my office, so I get to see them a little bit more frequently. But the level of work and commitment our student athletes give to their studies and they continue that on into the afternoon and evening and practice regularly and dedicate themselves. And certainly for the football team, it resulted in the Division III North Sectional Champion, and certainly one of the things for our town, as we think about our reputation as a town and what we hold is important. You know, having grown up a little bit closer to the area around Lynn myself and gone to that game, I think there were many people at that game who didn't know where Tewksbury was. I think they know where it is now. So we're very proud of the team. Even with that, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Couple guys, just wanna make sure we know all our guys here. Will Matobu is one of our captains, and Mason Laura is one of our captains. We've got Coach Bradley, he's our, one of our football coaches and our head basketball coach, I just wanna make sure we knew where everybody was. Football team was MBC champions, Division III North Sectional Champions, ten-game, ten-game winning team, only a handful of teams in Mass will win ten games in a season. This senior class has won 29 games their sophomore, junior, and senior year. Twenty-nine wins is a ton of wins in high school football. They have five first-team All-Conference players, they had a lineman of the year in Joe Rosberg, they have two all-scholastics, and Coach Elwood was recognized by the New England Football Officials as their Coach of the Year. He was the MBC Coach of the Year, he was the Town Crier Coach of the Year, and is the Lowell Sun here? Did they step in?
No.
I, I'll take a shot at the Lowell Sun, I go, whatever. We light up Wilmington by 28 points, 28 zip on Thanksgiving, and the Town Cry and the Lowell Sun gives Wilmington their Coach of the Year, but whatever, it is what it is. I'll throw that ball, that's fine. Crime was committed by the Lowell Sun, but anyways, these guys are great guys as athletes. Our football staff, and I'm around there quite a bit, our football staff is second to none, and I've said that numerous times. They outwork people, they outscen people, they put more time in than people. They're, what Brian does in the weight room in the offseason to just get these kids ready is a tribute to the success that this program's had and the tradition that it carries on. You know, we need to pick up two games, that's gonna be a chore, we can't just call any high school and say, "We wanna play football against you," they hang up the phone. So we're gonna have to find, you know, some teams that wanna play. We got a couple weird weeks that we gotta find some games, and it will not be easy because of the job that these four guys have done and the job that our coaching staff has done. We had two coaches in here tonight, in Peter Malloy and Brian Elwood, that are at the pinnacle of the Merrimack Valley, at the pinnacle of Massachusetts in their sports and what they do. So it's been a pleasure to watch these guys, and they got everything they had coming to them, they deserved, and a bounce here and a bounce there, we would've been at Gillette Stadium, so great year by these guys. Great year.
Well, great, I think you've all done a great job in Coach, great work, and Coach Elwood also being awarded the Massachusetts State Coach Officials' Coach of the Year award, I believe. Seen the coach, I'm not sure who was on that panel, because I'm not sure, there's too many officials that, but they're recognizing your work, Coach. It's always nice.
Great call, that was a good call.
Great work, Coach, we're very proud, we're very proud of the program and great work for that, and students, thank you very much. If we, did we get a picture? We got a picture? If we could have the coaches stay for a moment, and football players, you can have a picture. You have another one? Sure?
Yes. Thank you.
Will?
Thank you.
Mr. Druin, if we could stand there for one moment, and if we could have Coach Malloy, Coach Kuzak, Coach Sullivan out there, and all the coaches out there, if you could come on up real quick with Mr. Druin, I'd like to talk a little bit about the coaches. Madam Chair, we have a little bit of an unscheduled proclamation at this time, and certainly we wanna honor all our coaches for all the great work they do. But, you know, certainly through my career in education, I've had a lot of opportunities to have a lot of roles, my proudest day, as I recall, was the day I was called Coach, and I know it's a very proud day for all of you. And right now, we'd really like to honor one of our former coaches and our current athletic director, Mr. Ryan Druin, who has had the distinct pleasure of being honored by being inducted into Massachusetts State Baseball Coaches Association, and that will take place later this month. But it's just a terrific reflection, not only in Mr. Druin as a coach, but as you can see, as the programming and the other elements that he brings to his job as athletic director. It's certainly something that we hold dear to this district. Twenty-one seasons as coach, 243 victories, 60 percent winning ratio, 18 MIA tournament appearances, 10 Merrimack Valley titles, one Northeast finalist, three Lawrence Invitational championships. Lowell Sun Tewksbury coaches, they might take that back, but the whole team has been here in '05, and two basic game championships. So we're so proud of what Mr. Druin does, and it's not, he's being honored for being Hall of Fame coach, but the energy he brings, the interaction he has with our student athletes, all of our students, the commitment he gets from all of the coaches, the teamwork he presents with that, he's a true representative of what we find is important in our students and is important for our town, and it's just great to have him on our team, we're very proud of him.
Before I leave this resolution of recognition, I just wanna say a few words first, because I don't know if everybody out there understands the sacrifices that athletic directors make in terms of going to every game that they can go to, every home game, away game, being on call, listening to phone calls, and the sacrifices that are made. We have athletes here all the time, and I think that's a direct reflection from the talk on how this program is run. And I'll relay one other quick story, because I love to tell stories. I'll relay a quick story, because I work in Newton, and one day I was running at lunchtime, and I had my Tewksbury stuff on, and I was stopped by a Newton North person who was running, he was one of the coaches at Newton North. He said, "You from Tewksbury?" I go, "Yeah, I'm from Tewksbury." He says, "Let me ask you a question. How do you guys do it?" He says, "I see the size of your school, and I see how you guys perform. We have three times the amount of kids here that you have there, and you're in the top of the game every time, and that is a direct reflection on yourself and on your coaches." And, you know, for the school committee, I'm gonna for 19 years as a teacher, a coach, and athletic director at Tewksbury Memorial High School. And whereas, Ron Drewin was a physical education teacher at the Ryan School for 15 years and athletic director for Tewksbury Public Schools for the past three years. And whereas, Ron Drewin was the head baseball coach at Tewksbury Memorial High School for 21 years with a record of 243 wins, 18 MIA tournament appearances, and 10 MVC titles. And whereas, Ron Drewin is being inducted into the Massachusetts Baseball Coaches Association Hall of Fame on January 27th for his service and contributions to the game of baseball. And whereas, Ron Drewin has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to himself, to his family, to the schools, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore, be resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the outstanding contributions and achievements of Tewksbury Public Schools Athletic Director Ron Drewin.
There's one, one thing that people don't know, and I just wanted to share a quick little story, is that, as we know, we're honoring tonight Ronnie for getting to the Hall of Fame for baseball, right? Twenty-one years, outstanding coach, outstanding performance. You know, when we first were talking about having to be the interim athletic director, the first thing that Ronnie said, and he was very sincere, is, "Does this mean I can't coach baseball anymore?" So, everybody would laugh and say, geez, athletic director, wow, that's really going up, or baseball coach. He agonized for weeks, working not only with the school committee, but with our administration at the time. "I really want to coach baseball, I really don't want to give it up." And it's a tribute for him being in the Hall of Fame for 21 years. He agonized over it, but in the end, he did what was right for the school and was right for the program, and he's an outstanding athletic director. Mr. Francis summed it up, and I think, we get phone calls all the time, one of the hardest jobs in the district is to be athletic director, because everyone thinks their kid's the best, their kid's the greatest, they want more playing time. And I'll call it up and say, "Hey Ronnie, you did a great job today," right? He's the one picking up the phone where it's not always positive. And he continues to handle himself, so professional, does a great job representing, working with our administration team. We couldn't be prouder to have him as the athletic director. We do understand the sacrifice about no baseball, although I do see it at the baseball games from time to time, and he still has that passion. But Ronnie, we couldn't be prouder that you decided to make that decision and give up your passion and become our athletic director, and we're so happy for it. So, congratulations for getting to the Hall of Fame, well deserved.
Thank you.
Look at the roots of his family, everybody.
My wife Carol, my youngest daughter.
Thank you to his family for the sacrifices you made. We know he's going home, so we appreciate that.
Especially today's Carol's 15th birthday.
All right, let's do a picture, that may be sixteen months. You guys can come out here, get a nice picture. That's okay. Come on, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Happy birthday, Mrs. Drewin. We hope everybody has a wonderful night. Thank you for coming out tonight, great job, everybody. Now we're going down to business. So, we're going to go right along to our student representative, Ms. Grace Morris, to give us the Tewksbury High School's report this evening.
Thank you. So, just to start off, with student council, they're preparing for principal today, which is on Friday. They're also in the process of setting another event with DECA, and they're looking forward to their annual conference in March. DECA had a good district conference last week, they played against Sullivan, who came to judge the conference. They had 28 qualified for the state conference, which is a long-standing tournament, and their quiz bowl team. And the state conference is already scheduled. ECHO is going to be working on crafting on a lovely theme. National Honor Society is starting their malapids for veterans, and they're applying applications for veterans, which they're excited about. They are gearing up for induction in March and continuing their tutoring throughout the Tewksbury community. Math team is having an early, yeah, a new course. JCL went to the MFA with other labs, doing it with Mr. Emers and Mr. Early at Chaperone, and they made it both informative and enjoyable. And lastly, Best Buddies had their bowling party at Wamset over vacation, and they are participating in the Unified Bocce Driven in Rockland Pass.
I have a quick question, because I, just for my own, I don't know if you know the answer. What is principal's day?
Are they gone?
Is Mrs. Vogel here?
Okay, they left. Um, so a lot of these...
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I know, I should have said it.
All right. I'm just curious, I hadn't heard that before.
Different clubs, they come together and like, so student council is getting breakfast and decorating their offices.
Okay.
Different clubs will be providing for that.
All right, great. Thank you so much, Grace Morris. And a special congratulations to you, because I heard you did extremely well in the DECA competition.
Thank you.
That's moving forward, so congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have no presentations this evening. We're moving right on to citizens forum. So, is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak? If so, please come right out to the table, introduce yourself, give your street address, and we'd love to hear from you tonight.
Good evening, my name is Deanna Mancini, 15, Kennesaw Plain.
And I'm Maureen Castiglioni, 11098, Lethwa.
And we are here tonight representing the Tewksbury Special Education Parents Advisory Council. The Tewksbury CPAC is an organization for parents and guardians of children who are on IEPs or 504 plans and other interested parties. According to state guidelines, the duty of the PAC includes advising the school committee on matters pertaining the education and safety of students with disabilities, as well as meeting regularly with school officials to evaluate, plan, develop, and develop social education programs. We're here tonight to give you guys an update on some of our activities so far this year. So, in September, an interim board was elected, and that included myself and Ann Sechter as co-chairs. Maureen is our recording secretary, and Peg Ricardo as our publicity secretary. In addition, we have several parents at large who represent the different families at all the schools in town, and that, they are Christine Conway, Sarah Cohen, Lori Ostegui, Lori French, Michelle Haley, Al Mancini, and Jeannie Hogan. We hosted a basic rights workshop in the fall that was given by the Federation for Children with Special, for special needs. We sponsored a tree at the Tewksbury Public Library's Festival of Trees. We have been updating our Facebook page with resources and supports for parents and information. We've been networking with the local special education packs from other towns, and we've been also meeting about monthly with members of administration here in town, as well as members of the school committee. So, our goals are to educate and support parents on the challenges of raising children with, with different disabilities, and to provide a network for people to go if they have questions about the IEP process, about 504s, accommodations, programs, community resources, and things like that. We also want to help facilitate better communication between the schools and families, and we want to build trust between families and school administration. So, next Thursday, which is January 18th, right here at the high school, we are going to be hosting a meet and greet, and that's going to include members of administration, Representative Jim Moselli, and members of the school committee are welcome to come as well. And it's the opportunity for families to get to know our administration better and be able to ask questions and to hear about some of the programs and exciting initiatives of the Tewksbury Public Schools. The meeting starts at 6:30 and it ends at 7:30, but parents are welcome to come at 6 o'clock to 6:30 for a casual mix and mingle between the parents so that we can all get to know each other better. Future topics include a transition night, where we'll be talking about how to support students through the various transitions between schools. We'll also be hosting another basic rights workshop. So, for more information, please like us on Facebook, it's the Friends of the Tewksbury CPAC. You can get a lot of information there. We also, you can email us at tewksberrycpac, so tewksberrycpac@gmail.com. So, if you have any questions, you can send them there. So, if you guys have any questions for us, we're happy to listen, but thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming this evening, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you do. We think it's wonderful and we look forward to fostering this relationship. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak this evening? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to go right over to our clerk tonight, Mr. Sullivan, to present our meeting minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the December 6, 2017 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that motion.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the December 6, 2017 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. I'd now like to ask our clerk, Mr. Sullivan, to present our payroll.
I'd also like to move the school department payroll for the period ending 12/14/2017 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,299,687.86.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending December 14, 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I'd also like to move the school department payroll for the pay period ending 12/28/2017 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,310,509.59.
I'll second that motion.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending December 28, 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
You're welcome.
I'd now like to turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Malone, to present the superintendent and staff reports this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to update the committee and the community on some scheduling changes specific to the school committee meeting calendar. We have rescheduled February 14th to February 7th, that particular meeting. Also, the first budget hearing has been rescheduled from February 14th to March 7th. And we will reschedule the April 4th reorganization meeting, regular meeting, to April 11th and cancel to April 25th. That's a lot of cancel, but we'll get that out on the website and make sure that's out there, but there are a couple of changes going on, just to make the public aware of.
Yeah, and I would assume that's going to be posted on the website, the updated...
The updated date, right. The main part here is there's going to be quite a few changes, several changes, just to keep track of.
So, how about just for the record, so we can get Mrs. Johnson to put it up, why don't we just take a quick little approval vote on this calendar, so then it can go up tomorrow? So, with Mr. Malone's suggestion, the meeting from February 14th needs to be switched to February 7th, and that is reflective on the new calendar you see in front of you. And also, based upon the way the election was, we had to change the date for the April meeting, and it's now at April 11th. So, would someone like to make a motion to approve the changes in the new calendar?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the Tewksbury School Committee meeting, 2018 meeting schedule as revised this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. So, that'd be great, Mrs. Johnson, we get that up tomorrow and everybody can update their calendars. Thank you, Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly a big thank you out to the Tewksbury Rotary Club. As you know, every year during the holiday season, we try to, in the school district, support our families that are in most need, and our PACs certainly help out quite a bit, and we have a lot of people in the community that help us support them. In particular, this year, the Rotary Club stepped up and helped us with several families across the district, and were able to get items for our families that are most needy so that we can ensure that they had a great holiday season. And in over $3,000 value, they were able to contribute and help us with that. So, thank you very much to the Tewksbury Rotary Club, and thanks for their support, and thanks to the community for everything they do for the students. Just a notice out there that the Tewksbury Memorial High School Theater Company performance of Jekyll and Hyde will take place on April 26th through the 28th, so we're looking forward to that. A reminder that this upcoming Monday, that we know is school because it is Martin Luther King Day, and the townwide PAC meeting had to be rescheduled from this weekend, will take place on February 5th at 6:00 PM at the Wynn Middle School Library. Also, like to update the committee and the community on our most recent inclement weather. We were unable to hold school on Thursday and Friday of last week, mainly due to the amount of snow that we had and unsafe conditions. But once again, hats off to our maintenance crew, who certainly do yeoman's work and are out there all hours of the night trying to make sure our school entrances, our roadways, our access points to schools are all clear and safe, and they did do an outstanding job with that, and we're certainly appreciative of that. But as we all know, there's multiple factors that go into decisions around safety and weather events, and certainly transportation, buses, other elements will play as well. But we're, we're hoping that we have a good remainder of the winter season, but certainly that has thrown some schedules off with the cancellation of that school. Some new information out from the state regarding circuit breaker reimbursement. Right now, coming out of the state house, that is being budgeted at 65 percent. We're hoping that will change, that has been 75 percent full implementation the past few years. So, currently, within that budget, it is 65 percent. We will do work in the superintendents association, we'll do work locally from, from Tewksbury to work with our local legislators to make sure they're aware of certainly the significant need and use of that money. It is our hope that that percent increase in the final budget coming out of state will be higher, much more near the 75 percent that we're used to. Also, a reminder that the ESPOR, the Screening Brief Intervention Referral Treatment, this is the screening of seventh and ninth grade students across the state as regard to the opioid law that came out to screen them briefly for drug and alcohol and safe behavior use. That was put originally on hold due to the fact that the bill that had passed through was unfunded. The direction we are getting from the state and probably approximately about half the school districts in the state have already implemented. We were waiting to see what was going to happen with the law. Our guidance right now is to proceed with those screenings. There is no reimbursement or financial piece attached to that bill yet, it could be forthcoming. But we will be conducting those screenings in grade seven at the Wynn School, in grade nine at Tewksbury Memorial High School, and it takes, a date to be determined. Parents involved in that would receive a letter home. We get a letter and a notification per the handbook earlier in the year so that they are aware of it. Those particular students identified by grade will be notified more specifically by mail of that, and there's multiple opportunities within that protocol for parents to make a decision to not have their students participate, meaning for students that have not participated. But the goal from the state legislatures is that that law will provide an intervention and support for students who are in need and be able to identify them. We currently do have interventions and supports for students who are identified. This is a more formal protocol to make sure we're actually screening those students holistically prior to that. So, we will be scheduling that within the next few months, the parents will notify. And that completes my report, Madam Chair, and I'll move on to Ms. Grace.
Thank you. The first update that I'm about to give you is very exciting. On December 21st, right before the holiday break, we received a letter from the Department of Education, and it is awarding the district of a planning grant towards $9,810 for an innovation pathway initiative. This is a planning grant. This grant will help us fund our work as we prepare for a final designation application towards innovation pathways in our district. And as we prepare and plan to enroll students in those pathways next fall, if we receive that final designation, in very precise, we're poised to receive a very substantial amount of money, which I can't disclose at this time, that we can put towards that innovative pathway program here at high school. So, you know, the, the amount of money that we may receive is designed to increase our college, the career readiness of our students in particular pathways. The funds are provided from the New Skills for Youth Grant, Perkins Funding, and Performer's Incentive Fund, and the Sand Pipeline Funds. In February, in our school committee, we have seen some influence of those innovation pathways in the new program of studies for the high school. I have to tell you that I would be very remiss if I didn't recognize Karen P. O'Brien in this seed money towards this very large grant. We received two grant opportunities late in November. They had a deadline, or maybe it was October, they had a deadline, it was a very brief window of time. Karen was just dedicated and determined that we should go for this grant. She, in a week's time, fulfilled... innovation pathway initiative. This is a planning grant. This grant will help us fund our work as we prepare for final designation application towards innovation pathways in our district. And as we prepare and plan to enroll students in those pathways next fall, if we receive that final designation, and very excited, we're poised to receive a very substantial amount of money, which I can't disclose at this time, that we can put towards that innovative pathway program here at high school. So, you know, the amount of money that we may receive is designed to increase our college and career readiness of our students in particular pathways. The funds are provided from the New Skills for Youth Grant, Perkins Funding, and Performer's Incentive Fund, and the Sand Pipeline Funds. In February, in our school committee meeting, we have seen some inklings of those innovation pathways in the new program of studies for the high school. I have to tell you that I would be very remiss if I didn't recognize Karen Baker O'Brien in this seed money towards this very large grant. We received two grant opportunities late in November. They had a deadline, or maybe it was October, they had a deadline, it was a very brief window of time. Karen was just dedicated and determined that we should go for this grant. She, in a week's time, fulfilled the obligations of this grant deadline with the help of Dr. Cindy Bastieri and Jason Stamm. She was just, as I said, determined that we have the makings and we will write for this high school for this pathway grant. When we heard the news that not only did we receive the seed money, but they will, that we are very close to receiving this large grant, it's really due to her efforts constantly on improving our programs at our high school. So, we're excited. It's a new grant, a new opportunity, and we look forward to what that, this programming money will do for our students at the high school. If you remember, the original MCAS testing schedule I gave you is several pages long. January 2nd marked the beginning of our access testing. This is like our MCAS testing for our ELL students. It's large-scale English language proficiency testing, given to all of our kindergarten through grade 12 English language learners. This year, like the majority of our test testing, the access testing has gone next generation and has gone online. Our ELL team has reported to us that the testing's going fantastic, and I think based on really the collaboration and the work done behind the scenes in the last couple of months with our ELL team, led by Karen Machen, our network team led by Jason Stamm, and particularly the effort supporting the application from Cam Carey, we're really excited about this online testing, showing good progress for our students. So, from a district perspective, we're feeling more and more confident that this constant planning we're doing towards MCAS testing at all levels is setting us up for successful next-generation MCAS testing online, basically. I'll talk a little bit more about that later in my updates. Finally, where does the time go? I don't know if people realize this, but we're halfway through the school year, just another week. January 19th marks our halfway mark, the end of term 2, or quarter 2, and the end of semester 1. Our students across all grade levels are participating in mid-year benchmarking, end-of- course testing, finals. Schools, our schools are trying to also be mindful of how much testing students are participating in at this time of the year. So, for example, our high school has created two separate mid-year as well as final schedules. This year, this, next week, will mark the final test, testing schedule for semester 1 courses. And then the following week, going into the first week of semester 2, will be midterm testing for full-year courses. So students are inundated with seven midterms and finals at the same time, now that we're on the waterfall schedule. And parents can be reminded that term 2, or semester 1, report card grades will come out on February 2nd. That concludes my report. Well, my report, half of it was said by Superintendent Malone, I was gonna talk all about the snow removal, so just an echo to thank the custodial staff and the maintenance staff, and a very special thank you to John Machen, who worked over the weekend to get a front loader in here to make sure all the snow piles were pushed back so the buses could get through and have access to all the schools. And to piggyback on Assistant Superintendent Regan about grants, I received a phone call tonight from Representative Misselli's office that Governor Baker has opened up some line items, so I'll be able to report next time on exactly what those line items are and exactly the additional funding we will be receiving for the district. Budget season, as you know, is in full swing. Keeping in line with the budget calendar, Superintendent Malone, Assistant Superintendent Regan, and I sat down with various administrators to go over their submitted budgets and requests. In holding true to the town bylaws, I submitted the salaries and operating costs to the town manager this morning. I believe we're all attending tomorrow night's presentation to the board's selectment. Our first budget workshop is scheduled for January 24th at 6:30 here in the library. And our first public hearing is, it was one of the ones that was rescheduled because it was supposed to be on February 14th, so we did change that, and it's gonna be March 7th, and that will also be at 6:30. We're still finalizing the date for the school department's presentation to the finance committee, but I will know that by the next meeting, so I'll be able to report on that as well.
I think it was just, it's February 7th, not March 7th. February 7th will be the first public hearing, because we're moving the February 14th meeting to the February 7th.
No, it's the March 7th. So those 7ths will be in here.
Is the school today meeting, and I believe we...
We have our...
No, but I thought you were gonna move to a public meeting, you were gonna have it in the 14th to the 7th.
Right, March 7th.
Oh, not February 7th, okay. All right, push it out.
Those two 7ths.
All right.
That's confusing.
That's fine, I just thought when we talked on the phone, you said you were gonna just move it with the...
I think I said the 7th.
That's okay. That's all right. Now that we all know public hearing, Machen, this finally gives you more time, more time for us to look at the budget, so we can ask even more intelligent questions, but now we have a little bit extra time, so that's good.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. All right, moving right along to our consent agenda. Does anyone wish to take anything off the consent agenda this evening? I mean, I guess the only comment I would like to say, maybe, Mr. Malone, you might wanna talk a little bit about it. I was very pleased to see in the consent agenda that we're hiring another math coach. So I don't know if you or Mrs. Regan wanted to talk about that, but that was pretty exciting. I saw the nomination of Mrs. Yor, and I think she'd be, she's gonna be a wonderful math coach for the district.
It's a great opportunity to look at our continuum of how we're going to implement instruction to meet the 21st certain needs of our students. So, and we can couple that with hiring a defensive veteran teacher, who not only can take the skills that she maintains as a classroom teacher, and now spread that over multiple teachers, multiple students. And really, that maps as the methodology we're looking at to ensure that all of our staff members are providing up-to-date, highly qualified instructional components in the classroom every day for our students, because we feel that's what our students deserve. And part of that is listening to our staff and finding out where their needs are, how they can get better, and knowing that all the research tells us that in order for our staff to really operate the growth model where they continue to improve and continue to get better, is that they learn more from their peers, from fellow teachers, than they learn from many other areas. So we wanna capitalize on that. And it certainly is a piece in the budget that we've worked with Ms. Matthews to ensure it's a priority of the budget, and that was a position that was on our priority list for a while, and we've been able to push on some of those elements, particularly in the positions on our priorities over time, and mainly thanks to this board and to the selectmen and the town manager providing us with the budget and the opportunity to do that. So, we continue in that direction. I don't know if Mrs. Regan wants to say...
I just wanna say Sarah comes, you know, to that position with a great reputation as being a masterful teacher, not only in math, but in science, and she's been part of every collaboration we've, you know, been involved in with cross-district science, with the math PLC. She really, I can see her was unanimous with the committee interviewing her, even with looking at outside candidates and outside candidates' packets. She really is ready for this role, so we're so proud to have her on board.
Yeah, we're excited just to see that we're moving in that direction, and we're staying the course, and you guys, I think it's gonna be so wonderful, it's gonna pay back so many dividends, right, for our students, so I think it's wonderful. So with that being said, does anyone wish to take anything off, and if not, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to accept tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. And I'm gonna move right on to committee reports. We'll start with the Yolmich School Building Committee, Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll give my usual brief update. The following is a brief update since our last presentation on December 6th. The building committee and the OPM continue to meet on a regular basis to review and discuss the project items, such as establishing and meeting the project goals and objectives in accordance with the agreement between Tewksbury and the NSBA. Finalize the selection and procurement of designers through the MSBA Design and Selection Panel. Review potential site selections, should a new building become the preferred solution. On December 12th, 2017, three members of the building committee, Design and Selection Subcommittee, myself, Superintendent Malone, and Assistant Superintendent Regan, and the OPM Peter Collins attended and participated in the MSBA Design and Selection Panel, wherein three designer interviews were conducted by the following designer applicants: Flansburgh, J C J, and S M M A. The results of the design interview concluded with the selection of Flansburgh Architects of Boston, Massachusetts. The building committee has established a budget subcommittee who are underway and working with the OPM and designer to finalize the negotiation with the designer contract agreement. As we look ahead, the project tax over the next several weeks will include: schedule and conduct educational interview workshops with faculty, staff, and facilities; review and discuss the owner's project requirements for the purpose of generating a project mission statement; institute an all-encompassing project goal and expectation; conduct a project kickoff meeting with the MSBA; establish design parameters to develop and evaluate preliminary, preliminary, and final alternatives, with a recommendation for the most cost-effective and educationally appropriate solution; generate an initial space summary based on the district's education program; and document existing conditions of the Trey Inn School and perform a cursory review of all the other three elementary schools. After the feasibility study phase, the next phase will be the actual schematic design phase, which we will provide more details in the months ahead. Our next building committee meeting is scheduled for January 25th at 6:00 p.m. in the town hall. As we move forward, we will tentatively schedule our meetings from the first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 p.m. at the town hall. We're looking forward to providing monthly updates through the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Cutlass is also on that committee, is there anything you'd like to add or comment?
Very thorough report, I understand.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Okay, moving right along, Mrs. Bennett, anything on the Tewksbury Education Foundation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. They are in the process of scheduling a meeting. It will tentatively be the last week in January or the first week of February, and I'll get back to you on the date, or at least it will be emailed out to the parents that wanna get involved.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bennett. And the Wellness Committee, Mr. Sullivan.
I have nothing new to report this evening, Madam.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
You're welcome.
All right, moving right along, we're gonna go down to Mrs. Bennett for our policy review this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, the policy subcommittee met in mid-December, and we are going through the policies, the next stack of policies, there are 24 of them. Again, these were recommendations made by the MASC, and these policies recommended to review and revise as a result of legal changes, changes in practice, or updates in language to reflect modern needs on, and this is just an informational reading. There will be no vote required. We'll bring you again to the next school committee for a first reading as well. And everyone out in the audience, as well as staff, is welcome to review any of these policies and make recommendations to the superintendent's office. The policies that, again, they're for informational reading, are GCB, Employment of Principals, GCBC, Professional Staff Supplemental Pay Plans, GCE, Professional Staff Recruiting, GCF, Professional Staff Hiring, CGJ, Professional Teacher Status, GCQF, Suspension and Dismissal of Professional Staff, GDO, Evaluation of Support Staff, GDQ, Suspension and Dismissal of Support Staff, HB, Negotiations Legal Status, HF, School Committee Negotiation Agents, IB, Academic Freedom, IC, ICA, School Year, School Calendar, ID, School Day, IE, Organizational Instruction, IGV, Support Service Program, IGD, Curriculum Adoption, IA, IHA, Basic Instructional Program, IHAI, Occupational Education, IHAM, Health Education, IHAMA, Parental Notification Sex Education, IHBVA, English Language Learners, IHBH, Alternative School Program, IJ, Instructional Material, and last but not least, IJOE, Community Resources. Again, this is just informational.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Okay, moving right along to old business. Mrs. Regan?
Good. In front of you is the 2018 full year MCAS testing schedule for Tewksbury Public Schools. As a convenience to our parents, we, annually now, I think for the past four years, we boil down that five-page testing schedule and identify and clarify exactly which tests our grade-level students will be taking, which mode of testing. This year, we thought it was important to put on here, whether it be computer-based, whether it was legacy or next generation, so whether it be online, and then exactly which testing dates we have put into a schedule for certain grade levels. I just wanna remind parents that the dates below have been carefully planned out with principals and our networking team, so that we have the appropriate level of support at each school when we start testing. We do need to reserve the right to schedule, reschedule these dates if needed. We hope we don't have to, but with weather and what have you, you do never know. And then we also have updated the links for parents for some support to help their student as they prepare for MCAS testing. This document has also been posted to our district website. Another update for next-generation MCAS testing, which we make the package that we received last week. As, if you remember, a few meetings back, I informed you that all high schools will be participating in the piloting of the next-generation, there's a lot of syllables here, high school competency determination next-generation MCAS test. So those are tests given for the 9th and 10th grade level students. What we know now, as of last week, is Tewksbury Memorial High School students, grade 10, will be participating in the piloting of the next-generation ELA test. At least 25% of our students will participate in that ELA test. First-year ELL students will not be required to participate. We will be selecting students that, ensuring a representative sample of, that 25% will represent our entire student population. Participation in that field test will happen between the dates of April 23rd and May 11th, and those field tests and question tryouts do not replace or affect participation in the actual 10th grade ELA MCAS, which happens March 27th through the 29th. Additionally, our high school biology students will be field testing some of the new questions that'll take shape in the next-generation high school science test. So, I'm sure as we continue to receive updated information, we'll share that with you. But, so the question is now answered, Tewksbury Memorial High School students will participate in the ELA piloting. This will be the last year of our legacy MCAS test, in school year 2019. Those piloted tests that we're trying out this year will take shape in 2019 MCAS schedule. Science as well, this will be the last year of the legacy science, and then we'll start to see the next generation take shape the following year, I suspect.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. You've already done the school calendar, so we're all set on that. There's no new business, we'll move right to school committee members' interest. Mrs. Bennett, we'll start with you this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett, and Mr. Cutlass.
I'll second, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass, Mr. Francis.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Sullivan?
A few announcements. The Knights of Columbus is holding their yearly free throw championship this Sunday at 6 o'clock. A birth certificate is required. Participants are encouraged to show up at 5:30. It's being held right at the Doon School over on Andover Street. And if anyone has any questions, you can call Dan Morris, (978) 851-8157. For children ages 9 to 14. I'd also like to announce, I appreciate, Mrs. Bennett, the Town Cryer Female Athlete of the Year, as she announced, was Rachel Sessa, was great, and we can recognize her tonight. They also recognize an outstanding free-sport Tewksbury High School kid by the name of Blake Hiltz. He was the 2017 male Town Cryer Athlete of the Year for 2017. He's had great success in football, wrestling, and on the lacrosse, so a shout-out to him. Unfortunately, our Laura Force and Appreciation Night in honor of Ron Tarantino was postponed due to the inclement weather on the Friday before Christmas. We are putting the game back together, and that game, and the ceremony and reception is gonna be held on February 15th, right here at Tewksbury Memorial High School. For parents with special needs children, Liam Nation has started their sports, no-cost sports activities over at the Wynn School, every Sunday. It started last Sunday. It's a wonderful eight-week program. As I said, they do it right at the Wynn School, it starts at 1 o'clock, where they do some basketball. It runs to 3:30 for anyone that wants to participate in floor hockey after that. And finally, from the town's clerk office, our annual town census is underway. The town clerk has encouraged everyone to return, return as soon as they can. In addition to saving money in future mailings, the census provides information to assure that our town receives our fair share of... that our town receives our fair share of federal and state grants that are also used for calculating veterans' benefits, housing for elderly and other related veteran and elderly benefits. It provides proof of residency and voter rights, as well as maintaining the voter list, and our school census provides projections for future enrollments and related benefits, which allow school administrators to apply for additional federal and state funds and grants where applicable, and it's also a convenient way to comply with the town and state ordinance to register your dog, as there is a form attached to the border of that, so that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And then quickly, Mrs. Matthews touched upon it, we're all going to be at the Town Hall tomorrow night at seven P.M. for the overview of the budget being presented by Mr. Moretori and the board of selectmen. So if you can't go, you can stay tuned in, you can catch that on the local access channel. And then just for those people, there were a couple of questions. We don't really talk about it, because we don't get into it, but we are, we have begun negotiations, and we will be negotiating with all our bargaining units. We've already started, and we'll be doing that hopefully over the next few years, so we just wanted to let everybody know that as well. Are there any future agenda items? As always, you can certainly send those to myself, Mr. Malone, and Mrs. Johnson. Not seeing any, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. We will see everyone at our next regular school committee meeting. Thank you.